Okay, welcome everyone. Welcome everyone to the zoning board of appeals meeting on July tenth, two thousand and twenty five. We're meeting in City Hall in Greenfield, Massachusetts. Chair's statement, this meeting is being recorded by the zoning board of appeals. Any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time. In accordance, do you have a recording? Okay, thank you. I was, I read it so robotically, I didn't even realize what I had. No, I didn't say anything. In accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter thirty eight, Section twenty G, no person shall address a meeting of a public body without permission of the chair, and all persons shall, at the request of the chair, be silent. No person shall disrupt the proceedings of a meeting of a public body. If, after clear warning from the chair, a person continues to disrupt the proceedings, the chair may order the person to withdraw from the meeting, and if the person still, if the person does not withdraw, the chair may authorize a constable or other officer to remove the person from the meeting. So everyone's warned. So roll call of members, members here are.
Charles Roberts.
Jim Wett.
Debbie Jokes.
Mark Maloney.
Eric Green.
David Singer. Okay, so the first public hearing that's scheduled was, Deb, can I have, well, just, is there okay for have you read the, be the.
Yeah, sure.
So continued from June twelfth, two thousand and twenty five is.
Um, the application of Roxanne Crocker May, uh, Baker and Nicholas Kralowski for property located one ten James Street, assessors tax map eighteen lot six, which is located in the urban residential zoning district for variance pursuant to sections two hundred dash eight point seven of the zoning ordinance in order to allow an accessory structure woodshed to be located within the front yard setback area.
Are Roxanne or Nicholas here? Either here or online? All right, so for the benefit.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that I did not see anyone online, it's just very unusual. But I, I, just as participant. If you want to come around and see if I'm missing something.
I can't imagine.
I apologize for the extra time here, I don't want to do it, I mean, usually, yeah, we usually have at least two or three. Yeah, it doesn't like. It may not just be an exciting topic for people to, to join in, but.
I don't see anything.
Yeah. Turned it on, started the meeting.
It's about the.
This is recording.
Setbacks.
Say something about the woodshed.
I'm not right now.
Oh, sorry. All right, that's what.
No, no. But, I, I.
Sorry.
Did you go online? Is there anyone else there?
No.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
That's a good idea.
Hey, there it is. It just came up, Nate.
Oh, that was you. Yeah, but it shows that they can commit, okay. So, um. The information that we got from Eric was that the applicants have applied for relief from the building inspector, but have not submitted evidence that other properties that are adjacent to their property have the same or less frontage, which would qualify them for the, uh, for the frontage to be less than the twenty five feet. We have not heard from the applicants, but, um, you know, I would like to, uh, I'd still like to give them a chance to, to be successful in their endeavor. And, um, so I'll take a motion to continue. Now, Deb, you had asked about timing. The statute says that we have to, we have to hold the hearing within sixty five days of the application. So when we get to September, we will be past the sixty five days. So we've asked the applicant, uh, I'm sorry, wrong one. Uh, this is for the last one.
Yeah, that was the last one.
Okay, so this one can just go through, it's a continuance, and we'll just leave this on, on there, so a motion to continue?
So.
Seven.
Any discussion? Yeah, before I do that, I'll give you, please, I'll give you one minute to make a comment if you think it's beneficial.
I live right around the corner, I support their having the woodshed within the front setbacks. Uh, I know that there's, uh, some concerns about, uh, timing, uh, Roxanne is about to have a kid, her mother's moving in. I think it's within the zoning board of appeals power to offer their, or exercise their discretion, and I think they should miss.
Okay, thank you. It's just so you know, if you haven't followed it, um, they were told another way that they could do this. They would have to move it, but another way they could do it where they would have the flat surface and it would, it would solve all their problems. So if you want to help them, you can let them know that they, they still need to comply with the zoning ordinance in the sense that they have to get other properties that, in their neighborhood that have less frontage to show that there's a consistent, there's a consistency with their frontage and other properties near them.
Sorry, just as a point of clarity, do you need front setback?
Yes. So there's four other houses next to them that have similar or lower setbacks than them, front setbacks. So that qualifies them for their setback to be allowed as a, as another type of allowed setback. If, if you read the zoning, if they read the zoning carefully, they'll see that. So if you have connections with them, let them know that they really need to abide by that, or else the building inspector is not going to do anything. They've had them on, so I don't know what's.
They've had them on while they're eight months pregnant.
I understand, but they're in the system, so I don't want to have them be prejudiced. Okay. So it was good that you spoke.
Thank you.
All right, uh, all in favor, uh, so who, who's on this panel?
I was here last time.
So the four of us on the panel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, any extensions, no, so pass it unanimously. Okay, so next, can you please read the six thirty application?
Sure. Application of Nathaniel A. Tripp for property located at ninety nine Meadow Lane, assessors map R thirty four lot ninety nine, which is located in the rural residential zoning district for special permit pursuant to sections two hundred dash five dot three E two and two hundred dash eight point three of the zoning ordinance in order to allow up to twenty percent reduction of the required twenty foot side yard setback to allow the construction of a new garage at this location.
Being on the panel are.
Jim Wett.
Debbie Jokes.
Mark Maloney.
Eric Green.
Is, is A. Tripp here? You can step forward, please.
Thank you, folks, for having me, uh, this evening, do I speak now?
You're doing, okay, yeah. What are you, what are you, what are you doing, where are you doing it, why are you doing?
So, uh, first, thank you all for your service on these boards, I think that this is not the first time for many of you. My family is requesting, uh, essentially, uh, three feet from the twenty foot sideline setback, enabled, to enable us to put a, essentially make some improvements to our home, which will make our house much more functional and operational, uh, for our family going forward, and also, as part of this would be the addition of the garage, which will also be more functional, so we can drive straight into it. And to do that and to make it work, uh, we have to, uh, hopefully be able to cut into that setback line by three feet, uh, the garage is within the character of the neighborhood. We're not changing any, any use, um, we're just looking to make our house function a little bit better for us. And I believe, uh, you all have plans, if anybody doesn't, I have a couple of extra sets. We have to get, any questions?
So on page called site two is the, is what shows for the record the, uh, the location of the new garage and the seventeen foot sideline setback. I don't see that, I just looked up cheese on mine, couldn't find that.
Yeah, I did not have site two online, I had to have Eric send me.
No.
I did not have it.
I had to figure it out from, I figured it out by looking at this plan. It has a dimension, but I didn't have that one.
I didn't get it by.
Well, no, I, I, I'm all set, I got it, yeah. Yeah, it just.
If I re, if I refer to that, you want me to pass it around, do people want to see it?
I'm all set.
I'm all set too, I understand it.
My apologies if, if I did, or Staples copying, uh, of my, my. What's that?
I see what you said.
Yeah, it's just the one page, I think.
Yeah, it was confusing, because I was, I was thinking they were, where's the site? That's fine.
Okay, so this, this is what you intend to do, correct?
That, that's correct, uh, we have a local contractor on board.
Who do you have there?
This is, this is the, uh, the first floor plan of the garage, which actually has a setback dimension on this plan, which is right. Yeah.
All right, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, no, I'm not sure I have anything more to add, but I'm happy to respond to any questions, okay?
Uh, okay, any questions from the board?
You're going to turn the existing garage into bedrooms and a mudroom for your children, right? And then you're going to add a new garage facing the street.
Uh, yeah, not, not a bedroom, more of a, more of a place the teenager hang out and have a safe space in, in a mudroom.
Any other questions?
Um, I didn't see any correspondence from neighbors, have you talked to your neighbor immediately to the right of your house about it, are they aware of the plan?
They are, I spoke to him just before I came here, and he wished me luck with all of you folks today, uh, and that's, uh, Mr. Steiner.
Oh, good.
Right.
Good, good.
And the other question I have, this is, you intend this space to be used for personal space, there's no intent to like, at some point make that a daycare, it's just a really large space for recreational, so I just was curious if you had any long-term plans, or if it was just meant for use for your, for your family?
Just, just for our family, I, no more kids in my house. We, we, uh, so it, it will just be a recreational space, um, and a baby room. Again, I, I have a, my oldest is going into his freshman year of high school, and I've got three coming behind, and, uh, you know, we're just looking for a space that we can, so that's kind of, we're converting the existing garage into that type of space, and then hopefully we'll have a garage that we can actually park in. So that's what we're shooting for.
Now, there being upstairs room in this car?
Yeah, an unfinished garage, and that is intended to have tools and, you know, table saw and a a garage use.
All the.
Yeah.
Which other question?
Any else? No, no questions. Hey, put you on hold for a second, anybody here have any things to say about this application? Anybody on, online have anything to say, iPhone, have anything to say about, uh, this application? Okay, uh, no other questions, okay, I'll close the public hearing. Why don't we take a vote? Does that work?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, here, most.
I'll make a motion, and we approve the application of Nathan A. Tripp for property located at ninety nine Meadow Lane, assessors map R thirty four lot ninety nine, which is located in the rural residential RC zoning district for a special permit pursuant to section two hundred dash five three E two and two hundred dash eight dot three of the zoning ordinance in order to allow up to a twenty percent reduction of the required twenty foot side yard setback to allow the construction of a new garage at this location.
So, uh, subject to the following conditions.
Following conditions.
Okay, I get a second? Second, any discussion, anybody want to add? The only condition I would have that is, uh, um, special permit incorporates all the applicant's submittals, so that the, that the building will be done based on your submittals. So if you make any material changes to this, you may have to come back for another special. You're pretty good about, you're pretty sure.
We've, we've thought through this, we've.
Okay, it's not like it's a penalty, it's not like it's a penalty, it's just that it'll just be a house.
Happy to come back if, if we make something.
Okay, I think this. No penalties, okay. So incorporates by reference the application, including site two as the, uh, of the submittals as the representation of the location of the setback of garage. Any other conditions? Hearing done, okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Let the record show it was unanimous, you know, there's a twenty day right of appeal, uh, that starts once we submit the, uh, the decision, which probably will be submitted next week. All right.
Thank you, folks, appreciate that.
Six forty five.
Well, I know you gave me, I, I, I know we usually wait, but I feel like, in this case, unless anybody thinks any of the, and the only one that has any real questions is a little, is your, does the building inspector's, uh, comments, but we'll, we'll hear Sarah second, okay? And, um. Okay, is it six forty five?
It's six forty five.
All right, Madam Clerk.
All righty, so.
This here.
Okay, uh, application of Sarah Hillier for property located at six Cross Street, assessors map one oh four lot thirty one, which is located in the urban residential zoning district, a special permit pursuant to sections two hundred dash six point two E and two hundred dash eight point three of the zoning ordinance in order to allow a six foot fence within a portion of the front yard setback area at this location.
Please. State your name and what you're doing for this application.
Uh, my name is Sarah Hillier, and I reside at six Cross Street, um, thank you all, uh, and excuse my layman terms.
Please use them.
Yes, um. I have a request for the fence, the first panel, uh, from the property line end to be four feet, and the remaining three panels to be at six feet to join the existing fence that's already up. I spoke with Bruce and with Eric, because from the road to the pin of my property line is fourteen feet, and they said that that's usually a longer, uh, footage from the road to the pin from company property. And then if I went from my pin back, I think, is it twenty four feet or twenty five feet, um, that it should be at four feet, that, that brings me far back into my property line, but because of the fourteen feet that's already in the front, that when Bruce looked at it and he said there shouldn't be a problem, to do the first panel at four feet, and then the remaining all at six feet. And I attached a photo, I don't know if Eric's, um, forwarded that or not.
He did, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so on your map, if, um, you're saying that this, this location here where you stopped building your fence, right, that's, you've stopped building your fence at that point, that's twenty five feet from the road or twenty five feet from your actual property?
From the pin of the property.
So you've gone back twenty five feet, and that's where you've left those four panels, great, okay, so that's, that's within the rules, the setback.
Yeah.
So Bruce is who, he's the assistant building inspector?
Yeah.
Okay, and so.
No, Mark, I'm sorry.
You meant Bruce Austin. I might have said the same. So he, he, he said that, um, you could, you, you, you can, because we have the right, um, soon, fence, fence requirements may be modified by the ZBA, so technically you're supposed to have, the next four panels would be at four feet.
Correct.
But Bruce said that you should, you should do three, you can do three at six, but just the last one do it four feet.
Correct.
Okay, so that's, that's based upon the building inspector's suggestion.
Yeah, so he came out physically and looked at the property with me.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, any questions?
How close are we coming to the sidewalk? Because they recommend no more than thirty inches from the public sidewalk.
Yeah, that's a great question, there is no sidewalk. There is not, and any on Cross Street?
Okay.
Nope.
How close is the fence to the neighbor's property?
It's up to the line.
Right. And how do they feel about it?
Um, we have had conversations with that indirectly, um, and having a resolved speaking with, um, town police officers that, and also with Bruce and with Eric, that I am all within legal limits of, of the fence line.
Yeah, I mean, the worst case scenario would be that you miss four feet all the way up, special permit.
Okay.
So the fact that you want six feet into the frontage is what gives you this, which, which puts you into our jurisdiction.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
So if you're, if somebody, if anybody in the neighborhood thought that was a bad idea, they, they should come here tonight and let us know why they thought that. They have a chance, I'm going to go to that next, but, uh, my impression is that four feet is, is, is fine.
Oh, can I share something as well? Speaking with two of my other neighbors, the one looking at my house to the left of me, and then the person across the street from that, and directly the person across from me, they were all in agreement with me, and they don't have an issue with it, but I, and my mistake, um, thinking if they weren't opposing, that they would not have to be present tonight.
They don't.
Okay, okay.
I mean, my impression from going out there is that, you know, usually, like, this tree belt area is unusual, um, normally that's, a lot of times, I'll see these kinds of fences, and I think the reason for the bylaw is that it, it cuts off the vision of people that are coming down the road.
Yeah.
But because of the tree belt, you can see around.
Correct.
And then your four foot just gives another helpful reduction, so you can see around even better, so that's, I think that's the reason for it, because you'll be coming out of your driveway.
Yeah.
Okay, any, any other questions?
Um, just, so on the very last post that, that is out there, um, that's the, that's where it's ending.
Correct.
Yeah, between the last.
That would be.
That's the four, four.
There wasn't one more post going out four more feet.
No, that's right, that's, that's a good question.
No, no.
Do you see that?
And will the post, will those last posts shorten to four feet or?
Yes, yeah.
Because I looked like it was about six.
Yeah, yeah, they put all the posts in all at once, and then we've left the last four, where four panels would go exactly the way they were, not feeling that that obstructed a view at all of having a six foot at the very end. Yeah.
I mean, to put it precisely, the special permit is to allow for the three six foot panels.
On this side.
Four foot panel, the last one is allowed.
It was just those three, okay.
Three that continue it.
Okay.
Okay, that's what, that's what the building inspector is saying that we should do, because we, and we can do that, so, okay.
May I ask another question?
Of course.
Great, um, if you look at the photo, um, you'll see that there is a basketball hoop there, um, and that is my neighbors that you see with the red car and the red van, um, and that is on the tree belt. I have asked several times for that to be moved over onto their property. I understand that where my tree belt is, that belongs to the town, but I maintain that area. So I've asked several times for that to be moved, and they refused to move it over into their side of the property. So speaking to Eric and Bruce about this, I have, um, I asked, I'm sorry, Mark, I asked Mark if it would be possible at the end of the four foot fence, so it would come down this way, to erect another four fence, and then the basketball hoop is right here, and he said that that would be within guidelines, because it would be four feet there, um, because I'm not sure how to go about to solve the issue of this basketball hoop where it's located, unless somebody else has some suggestions.
You're saying that you want to then kind of have another fence panel that runs parallel to Cross Street, so it kind of corners off your fence and provides a visual barrier.
Correct.
From.
From that basketball.
Word of the basketball.
Right, yeah, exactly.
So, I mean, just my opinion, but you don't own the tree belt, correct?
Correct, and I have a clear understanding of that. I've asked my neighbor several, several occasions if they wouldn't mind moving that over onto their property. They have refused on several occasions, and, um, I had just said, well, if the tree belt is public property, then I could take up some of my belongings and put it on your tree belt, and they said, no, if they, if I did that, that they would destroy everything. So as time kept moving forward, the conversations kept getting more and more heated, hence, I went and spoke with Bruce and Eric and made sure that I did everything by the law for this fence, so I can have my privacy.
Understood. I would say that you can't put a fence, you cannot put a, extend your fence, because you don't own that property. Now, I don't know what the rules are in Greenfield about the tree belt. I think that's really up to the city take care of, since they own the property. So if you were going to communicate with anyone, I would suggest you continue to communicate with the building inspector, or if you wish to talk to the mayor about it, but it's city property, so.
Yeah.
So your neighbors going into city property is not a violation of your rights, it's a violation of.
Correct.
If there's any rights that are violated, it's the whole, it's us, the citizens as a whole.
Yeah.
So I would say that, while I appreciate what you're saying, it's not relevant to this.
Okay.
I'm not saying it's not important.
Oh, no.
But it doesn't, it's not part, it's not part of our decision.
Yeah, that's understood.
Okay, and I don't think you'll get permission to put a fence panel in the tree belt.
No, it, it's on my property line is what I was requesting, not on the property.
But you're right, but you, you, no, but what you're requesting, you're going right up to your property line, right?
Right, but if I put a fence here.
Oh, 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 oh. Then you would have to comply with the zoning that allows for that, yes, of course, I'm sorry, I thought you meant you were going to go, yes, of course.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Great.
I don't want to be the guy sitting here telling you how to do it, but if you read the same section, it would tell you how to corner it.
Yeah.
And there's a certain distance and things like that, so, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, okay.
And I think if you, again, I'm not reading this, but maybe this is what you could do without coming back to us.
Okay.
So as it's not over four feet, I think you could do it.
Yeah.
Which is what you were just saying.
And that's what Mark had suggested as well.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Right.
Okay, so that's good, so, um, I will stop here, and did I ask, I already asked, anybody, uh, in the public have anything to say about this petition by the applicant?
Yes, uh, I'm Miss Hillier's neighbor.
Yes.
She never met.
Well, I'm sorry, you state your name and your address.
Um, I'm David Terasi, I live at fifty seven Shattuck Street.
Okay.
Um, I walk my dog by your house like three times a day, um, I think Miss Hillier's made a lot of improvements to our property, and I think that the six foot fence would be a positive impact on the neighbor that owns the basketball hoop. It makes their property make more sense, and it makes the property that's behind your property make more sense. Um, before, it was kind of just this awkward, you know, man's land, um, I think it's a improvement for everyone.
Great, thank you.
Is there anybody?
Anybody else, anybody online that?
iPhone two? That's our handle?
Yes, please, iPhone two.
Hi, my name is Sarah Colsey, I am the property owner that is right next door, that is on the boundary of this fence. I am the one that also owns that basketball hoop, um, I apologize, but I just found out about this hearing, uh, today, and there is some contention in regards to the property line and where the current fence is right now. I have had an inspector come out, a surveyor, to survey the property line, and there is actually no official survey done to show the exact property line between my property and the petitioner's property. And there are actually two sets of pins, um, between mine and her property. The surveyor that I had come out, um, has said that her fence is actually three quarters of an inch at least on my property, um, so personally, I am very concerned about anything when it comes to extending this fence further down the driveway, uh, for multiple reasons. One, I feel it's going to hinder, um, my ability to be able to see, to get in and out of my driveway. And secondly, as far as the fence goes, I don't know exactly where the property line is. We have asked the petitioner for a survey that she claims that she has had done, um, and she has not produced it. The surveyor that I had contacted said in order to get a full-on survey for the two properties, it would cost roughly about thirty five hundred dollars. So at this point, I would like to make it known for the record that my husband and I are not in agreement with this extension of this fence, we're not in agreement with the fence at all, um, especially where it is at the moment. And we would like to ask that an official survey be done on the property to show where the property line is before any further fencing is built.
Okay, I hear you, thank you. Anybody else have anything to say? Okay, right, so, um, I, I guess I, is this a survey?
This is the town from the office, yeah, the Deaves.
Um, so what's your response to the, you don't have, you, you. So what's your response to the, you don't have, you, you, you did not have that line for the backline survey, is that true?
I did.
You did have a survey?
It's not a complete survey. It is, um, someone came out and, um, found all the pins for me. And that was with, I don't, I'm not sure what the piece of machinery is called, but you know, the big tripod. They came out and they found all the pins for me.
So it's your belief that the fence is inside of where those, these pins are?
Yeah, yeah.
Were they able to create a drawing survey?
I'm sorry?
Were they able to create a drawing from the survey that they did, so you can show where your fence is, runs into the property lines?
Yeah, um, great question with that. If he had done that, then like, uh, Sarah was just explaining here, it'd be, you start to go into the thousands of dollars to do that. I hired him to come out and survey just to find the pins for me, and that's what he did. So that's where we are with that. And, um, as soon as that had been done, uh, my neighbor Sarah, I had asked her if she would like to come and see the pins immediately after. It was like within a day of this being done, and she refused to do it. She just stayed on her porch and just had, had mentioned that, um, perhaps I'm the one who put the pins in there. So, you know, I, I feel as though that I've tried to meet a lot of the needs and do things within the law of, of everything here. And I'm just being up against every single stop possible. I'm the one who is actually the financial person who's absorbing all of this cost. And it's adding to the neighbor, it gives her the privacy of her yard. It also gives me mine. And I would think that there would be some sort of grace there in being appreciative, regardless if one thinks it's three quarters of an inch of a difference that somebody else has absorbed the thousands of dollars it is costing to put this fence up, instead of coming up against a block every single time to try to improve the neighborhood and giving their property as well an improvement.
David, can I ask a question?
Please.
You referenced earlier that you've had, I think you said, police, the building inspector and the town planner on the property, and that they've all affirmed that the placement is legal. Could you just say a little more about that? Like, have, did they speak to the neighbor? Did they check out property pins?
Yeah.
What's the, like, what's their conclusion that your current placement is okay?
Okay.
Where's that coming from?
Would you like me to break down each person that you mentioned?
Sure.
Okay. So, uh, uh, when I hired the company to come in, there were, uh, all bushes there that had been placed there decades ago by the person that I purchased the house from. When they came in, they took the bushes out, and of course, you know, they've been there for a long time. They were also, um, willing to go and fix all of the property where it might have pulled away from. Uh, when they pulled out the bushes, the following morning, Sarah was outside with those, um, poles, so, you know, so a plow won't hit something, and eyeing where she thought that, where the property line was. And I had said to her that the company was going to come, you know, they're coming back, obviously, to finish, but they would take care of the soil and the grass and all of that. And she was just very unkind in her words. And so at that point, when the company came back, I had said, um, can you all hold for a moment? Because I knew something was going to follow suit from this. And so I went to the police station, I just gave them heads up, which I have, um, from other numerous times working or not working with Sarah, I guess you could say. And I just said, I just wanted to give you heads up. I'm having a fence put in and I, my neighbor is, you know, probably not going to be happy about this. Five minutes later, Sarah walks in and complains that there's damage to her property. And so the two officers came out, one spoke with me, one spoke with her. And then when both officers came back to me, they had, um, had said, one of them had said, did you show her the survey? The other officer said she doesn't have to legally. And then I was asked, did you let Sarah know that you were putting the fence up? The officer, the other officer said she doesn't have to legally. And speaking with Mark and with Eric on all of this, and I've spoken with Eric probably five or more times on this. And he also explained exactly how to do this, and then inviting also Mark to come out and look. And he didn't have a problem with it at all either, and he walked all of the property for me.
Thank you. Did you say, I mean, Sarah, I, I'll ask you the same, did, did you say that Sarah, did Sarah say she had a survey, but she wouldn't show it to you? Or does the police officer say that?
To, to me.
To you, that you didn't have to show her?
Right, correct.
Well, legally, Sarah needs to get notice that this hearing is taking place. So she needs to know that that's happening, because she has a right to, to object.
And, and she does. And, um, when I, I went through the process with Eric, and he showed me, uh, because you have to pay a considerable amount for this permit. And also that within three hundred yards, all of the households around you are notified. Looking through all of those, um, names, I did not see Sarah or her husband's name on there. Come to find out, their house is listed under a bank. So it was up to the bank to notify her.
I see, so, I see. Sarah, can you see me?
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at you, yes. So you're, you're saying that you have, have you hired a surveyor? Do you have something?
I had hired a surveyor to come out to the property. It had cost me five hundred and fifty dollars to have the gentleman find the pins. And as I said earlier, there are literally two sets of pins. There are an older set, and there are what looks to be a newer set, which are the ones that I am calling into question, because these are the ones that have magically appeared where the bushes previously were. I have lived in my home for twenty years. The situation with the bank is a personal matter, that is none of, um, the complaint is concerned.
Well, the only reason it's our business is because the notice goes to whoever's listed in the assessor's office, so you should know that just for your own information.
No, no, and I appreciate that, but, um, just to, just let you know, I, I've lived in my home for twenty years. So she's been my neighbor for, well, off and on my neighbor, because she's been an absentee homeowner, but off and on for twenty years. There, there's no reason why she did not notify me. I was notified from another neighbor about this hearing today. But the, the pins that are listed that are now where the bushes previously were, these pins, i- if you come out and look at them, they look very new. They are not anywhere near the same pins that are on the other side of my property, nor are they the same pins that are on the properties adjoining ours.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you, let me ask you this. What's, what's the distance between the two sets of pins?
My property extends eighty-six feet one way and sixty-six feet from the town line on Cleveland Street.
No, no, you said you found two sets of pins out there.
Yes, sir, there's two sets.
So how far, are they an inch apart? Are they a millimeter apart?
They're a couple of millimeters apart, they're not inches apart. But they are on the Cleveland side of my property. And then there are two sets of pins on the back end of her property that connects to our other neighbors, the Millers' home.
But the difference between the two sets of pins, the ones that are older and the ones that you claim are newer, is less, is like a millimeter apart?
No, sir, I, I can't guesstimate that because.
An inch apart, less than an inch.
The newer pins are in between my property and hers. The older pins are the ones that are doubled up, and they are in between my property on Cleveland Street and the back end of her property. So between whatever, I'm not sure the house number on the other side of hers on Cross Street, there's two pins over on that side. There's also two pins on the Miller's property, which is the property that is connected between mine and hers. I think their address is fifty-two Cleveland Street. So there's.
What's the distance between the two pins?
There's a different distance for each set of pins. There are multiple pins on every property.
But if you were to take the maximum distance of any of these multiple pins, what would that distance be?
Couple of inches, uh, depending on which property, yes.
Okay, thank you, that answers my question.
Yep, and then also, if, if I may say, when it comes to any contention between me and her, this all started because this past winter in particular, she called the police on my husband for shoveling the driveway, sir.
Yeah, I, um, your, your, your involvement in this is to just speak to the application. I'm, I'm, I'm not interested, I don't think the rest of the public is interested in your private, uh, relationship with Sarah.
No, I, I mean, it's, it's fine, I just, I didn't want my, my name to be thrown under the bus, because she's making me sound like I'm, I'm the bad guy in this situation. And she took out the bushes without giving us any heads up to it. She put up the fence without telling us. She didn't ask us anything about any of this. And as I've said, the fence, the property line is in contention. And I firmly believe that there should have been a properly done survey to determine exactly where the property line is before those bushes were removed, because the surveyor I had come out said that those bushes were more likely my bushes, not her bushes. So the fact that this contention over this fence, i- i- it, it's a headache, sir. And I, I just, a survey would have dealt with this and would have put everything to rest and made things set in stone.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. If, if, I think we've got, unless you want to say something more. I think we've got all the information.
Right.
Okay.
Yes, I've got one question. Your fence, does a good side face your house, or does a good side face the neighbor?
Towards me.
Good side is towards you.
Yeah.
Is it supposed to face the neighbor? So the good side should face the neighbor.
Again, speaking with Mark, I asked him. He said that it was a courtesy. They, the company that was putting in the fence, when they were moving the flag pins that Sarah had put in to make a, their next step, she said she came out and told them to not step on her property and to stay away. They had no other choice but to put the fence up the way they could. And I spoke with Eric before they did it, twice, I spoke with Mark. And everyone was in agreement that that's a courtesy.
Okay. All right, is there any, uh, anything from, uh, town departments to read into the record?
I mean, so, hold on.
Oh, I don't know, did I say, did I announce who's gonna sit on this panel?
Oh.
All right, well, I'd like to read into the records first.
Um, so we received a notice from the Inspector of Buildings, who had no comment or issues with the proposed project. And also, uh, we heard from the Department of Planning and Development, who had no issues or comments, uh, regarding this proposed project. And those are, that's all the correspondence we have.
For the record, sitting on this panel are.
Jim Wynn.
Debbie Jokes.
Mark Maloney.
Eric Green.
David Singer. Okay, uh, if there's nothing else, other questions, and there's something else from anyone, anybody else have anything to say? Besides Sarah, who's, okay. So we'll make the decision tonight, we have another, uh, hearing, I think we probably.
You were overdue for it.
Overdue for it, so if you want to stay and wait for us inside, that'd be great.
Sure.
I'll take them in order.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Alright, thank you.
Love it.
I'm gonna step out for a second.
Sure, we all do feel this for a little while. Okay, seven o'clock, application? OXPO?
You ready for me?
I'm ready for you.
Alright. Application of OXPO Design Build Cooperative for property located at one eighty-seven Hope Street, Assessor's Map eighteen Mont twenty, which is located in the urban residential zoning district. A special permit, sewage protections, two hundred dash five point three E two and two hundred dash eight point three of the zoning ordinance in order to allow a twenty percent reduction of the required ten-foot side yard setbacks to allow the construction of a new two-story duplex at this location. And sitting on the panel are.
Sitting on the.
Jim Wynn.
Debbie Jokes.
Mark Maloney.
I need a cheat sheet, Eric Green. And please step forward, you are?
My name is Noah Modi. I'm a member owner with OXPO Design Building, a registered architect.
And your address?
My address is twenty-eight Russell Street in Greenfield, right around the corner from this project.
Okay, thank you.
As is, uh, actually, incidentally, one of our other principals at sixty James. He'll be here tonight, but he's recovering from a knee surgery.
Okay, glad to have you, so, uh, what's going on?
Uh, so we are trying to build a duplex on this lot. And as you'll see on the site plan, uh, it gets real, real steep, real quick. So we're, uh, requesting a twenty percent reduction on the setback so that we can make the house, um, stretch more parallel to the, to the photography lines. And, uh, sorry, I didn't bring a set with me. And so that we can get a little closer to the street, so that we're not dealing with that slope. We're worried about, uh, digging into the hill, both because of drainage concerns, uh, excessive cost, and, um, upsetting some of the vegetation, uh, destabilizing the hillside.
Any questions?
Um, I do, yes. So you're looking for reduction on the side setback?
I'm sorry, that should include the front setback as well. And we do have a little bit more flexibility, uh, front to back.
So.
Isn't this twenty-five feet?
Uh, it's.
Application requests. It doesn't request a front yard setback. At least the face sheet doesn't.
No, I was not saying no front setback. But my question was actually on the side.
Side yard setback.
The, uh, plan, plan illustrates an encroachment on the front setback as well. Is there any way that we can talk about that tonight?
Just don't think so, because, listen, I, I want you to know I'm sensitive about the hassle factor, so hear me out. The problem is that you're giving notice to the public that you're wanting relief from the side yard, right? And that's what everybody thinks. So if I were your neighbor and I thought two feet on the side yard, maybe I don't care, that'd be, so that's, I show up or I don't show up based on what I've noticed is the problem. But if you're asking for front yard setback, then somebody has to, your butters, people who are given this notice have to know what you're asking for. So if, if, it's not a matter of whether we couldn't entertain or understand what you're asking to do, it would be that your, the notice to your butters didn't give, the proper notice that needs to be given under the statute or the ordinance, didn't give them, uh, information about the fact that you're also asking for relief in front.
Understood.
I think that's a problem.
Well, as I mentioned, we do have more flexibility front to back. Uh, we can move the house up the hill a little bit. I would rather do that than wait another sixty days.
I mean, that's fine, uh, just so you know, we could talk about this special permit, make a decision, and then you could ask for a second special permit if you wish, so.
That would be great, thank you.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, absolutely.
You're not precluded.
Okay, excellent.
But I was just saying, if you wanted everything, if your construction was gonna happen in October and you wanted all this set up so that your construction, with all this work done, would meet those requirements at one time, and we'd have to continue it, uh, until September to cure both of them, you'd have to send out notice again. Either way, you're gonna have to send a notice again. But if your, if your strategy is you just want to hear about this, and you'll apply again for a special permit, that's up to you.
I think the strategy that he's saying is.
We'll move the house.
Trust the site plan, so that's fine, actually. We can address the side setback, and then as a condition, say that these plans actually, that the property needs to go further back from Hope Street, what these plans indicate.
He's got it.
What's your take on doing something, like to approve? Like, if it's not in the plan, what's your take on approving it?
Well, I was just being more simplistic about it. You're not gonna get a building permit for this site being this close to the frontage. So whether we, we don't even have to talk about it, you're, you're asking for relief from the side. I guess maybe we, maybe we can't talk about it because you're not asking for enough, uh, relief for us to even approve the sideline, because why would we approve the sideline if the front is, is not valid?
How, to what degree can these plans be malleated when they go to the building department? Uh, you know, these aren't, I mean, we're not gonna try to build off a single page. Uh, we, we hold ourselves to higher standards than that. But, you know, it's, the cost of actually moving the house up the hill is way less than the cost of a ninety-day delay. And, and so I'm, I'm happy to, I'm happy to just move it, but I don't, I don't, I think that's.
So I'll answer, I'll answer, here's how I'll answer your question. If you were to have a two ten-foot setbacks and twenty-five-foot setback, you can build this house without needing to come to us. But because you're asking for the twenty percent setback, uh, deduction on the side, it has to match an actual location on the ground and a natural project on the ground. So for us to. So for us to approve it just in, in theory, in other words, if you're moving that house back, this is not the proper site plan for us to approve your, your, your request. Does that make sense? The site plan has to make, it does make sense to you?
Well, yeah, you don't think we can approve it with the condition that the house is gonna be moved back to conform with the front yard setback?
So then, so then everybody comes in and says. Then it becomes, everything becomes fuzzy. I mean, I. I'll entertain that as an idea, but I think the whole point of this is there's a, there's a request for the site plan. The site plan and the request have to match up. If you were even, even if we gave you, so just to show where I'm coming from, if we were to give you this relief. And, and this was fine. And then you moved the house back two feet, I think you'd have to come back and say, relook at the site plan again and give me a special permit again from the real site of my house.
So can I just ask a clarifying question?
Absolutely.
Is your expectation that. You receive completed construction documents at this phase?
No.
Okay, so.
You could have drawn this on a napkin and said, I'm building something twenty-five feet, but twenty-five feet here. I mean, not a napkin, but you show it. So that, so this, if this isn't where the house is gonna be located on earth, we can't give you relief.
So what are the tolerances? So what are the tolerances between the bar napkin sketch and the full construction documents? If this is eighteen feet, six inches, do I have to come back to you? Cause that would change.
No, it wouldn't change, I mean, it would change the length of the line?
Yes. If it was eighteen feet, one inch, would I have to come back to you?
Well. You're, you, you've made a point. Um.
Look, that, that, that's a, that's a construction tolerance error. If we don't, we don't have, we wouldn't have to worry about an inch, but.
No, it's, but we, we just, we just, we sit on some levels, this is my interpretation, and I'll hear from others. We sit in somewhat of a vacuum and you come to us for relief, you show us what you're doing, we sign off on what you're doing. You go back into the real world, we don't know what you do. If something is different and somebody in the planning department, the building department says, hey. You gotta go back to the zoning board for a, uh, you know, to, to, for another site plan. We're, uh, as far as I can know, we're not really in the business of negotiating these kinds of things, at least through, through my experience, but I'm willing to hear from other members of the board about other.
I just need to know what to do next.
I know, but we're, you're, I, I'm just putting out in the open what my concerns are, giving you a chance to respond. But go ahead.
I think the plan at the very least needs to show where it's gonna sit on the lot and what the setback they're requesting is. Um, you know, it's one thing if we're in here and we, you know, decision's made, okay, you know, we can allow a, a seven foot versus an eight foot, or, you know, you know. That kind of thing, but we should at least see, it should, the drawing should at least show where they intend to put it on the lot. I don't think we should be approving it. And then they can move it back, you know, twenty feet. But I mean, as well as actually, if that point, they're moving back twenty feet, then they don't need to come before us for the front yard setback. But right, I wouldn't be comfortable approving a drawing that doesn't show that it's going to meet the setback on its own.
And even though.
This is not part of the application. If the application said, I need a front and side relief, and we, and there was some discussion about where the drawing needed to fall, I'd be okay. But you're now saying, here's a drawing, it's not meeting the front yard setback and I haven't even asked for it yet. That's where I have, that's where. I feel uncomfortable proceeding forward with the front setback.
And so unclear, uh, even if, you know, clearly we're going to be submitting more documents to the city. We can't condition approval of those documents on it meeting the front setback and having, having gotten the reduction on the side setbacks. We can't condition any of that.
I think what you're asking for is simple, but. That's the, the world that you live in in terms of just communicating with us on this one-time basis. But we also sort of have a, a style that we need and a, and a sort of a, a method in which we do business because. While your case might be in your mind and maybe even in our minds, minor adjustment, somebody else could come in and move their house ten feet. And that could be a big deal for everybody in the neighborhood. But yet we, they're gonna say, well, you gave the other guy, you know, sort of a flexible setback. Uh, why don't you give us a flexible setback? And so, and so we have to be very careful that. That we follow a certain set of procedures. I'm, I'm one to always try to help the applicants, so I'm trying to think of a way in which we can help you out. Um.
I mean, and, you know, and because we still have this, I, I guess I just want to say this, I have a lot of questions about the side setback. So, you know, that, that's.
In, in, anyway, so it's not like, it's not like, it's not like a gimme, right, kind of thing.
But, you know, the, the, the idea that we would, we could condition it that, you know, we'll approve the side yard setback if they submit plans that meet the front yard setback. Based on the way the ordinance is written, I'd be up to entertain that thought. But I, you know.
Say that again?
I would be, I would be okay with discussing the fact that, you know, if we, you know, if we were to approve it. That we could approve it with the condition that the front yard, the, the building must be moved to meet the front yard setback. And if they can't figure that out, then they have to come back.
But what about the fact that people are given specific notice and, and information about what's going on? I mean, in, in, we, we, for the, for the butters not to be able to weigh in on even the smallest change seems like something that's remiss.
But legally, legally, he could, oh, if, if, if he's meeting the front yard setback legally, he wouldn't have had to come from, for us. He's only here for the side part. So if he met, if he meets the ordinance with the front, then he, there's no notice given to your butters anyway.
Right. No, there. No, there is, he doesn't, he, he.
If he met his front yard setback, he would not need to come before us.
No, he's asking for side.
Yes, I know he's, I know he's asking for side, but if the condition, he has to meet the front yard setback. As a condition, if we allow the side yard.
All right, I guess we're looking at it from different, I'm trying to see where, how you're looking at it. For me, it's just more. The due process thing. I'm not, I'm not thinking about it practically. I'm thinking about due process. People have a right to know. What.
That the plan submitted does not meet the front yard setback.
No, people have a right to know what's before us. And what's before us isn't this.
Right.
Then every applicant who didn't come here thinking that it was this. May have a complaint about what is actually gonna happen on, in real life. And, and, you know, not, not that I'm saying it will, but. So that's the piece that I'm fixated on. It's just a due process piece.
I'm sorry, though, if, if, if you were to grant. Some of the side yard setback, under the condition that it meet the front yard setback. Then we would just move it. And what right would they have to complain about the front yard setback?
They have a right to complain about the fact that your side yard setback is now here. Maybe that neighbor doesn't like it here. They're okay with it here, but they don't like it here.
Three and a half feet.
Well.
People are fighting over.
I mean, it's, it's not my place, it's not my, it's just, if you respect what I'm saying, it's not my place to judge. What, how the butters are gonna feel. It's my place to have a, a fair system. You know, the rules are the rules, system, especially the due process piece, you know, once you're, so just so you know the distinction. If you came before us and you, and the applicants and all that was correct. And then you were trying to finesse why we should give you this setback, even if the abutter complained about the fact that it's this far back. Then we would have room to work with you as a board because that's now within our jurisdiction to decide whether what you're doing is okay or not. Once the abutter says what they're saying, then it comes upon us. But I just feel, that's my feeling about it. People wanna weigh in differently, but I.
No, I think you make a good point about the fact that somebody might have been okay with this, and I know it's only three feet, but three feet could change somebody to do off their back deck or. You know, where they walk their dog. I mean, it can change so many different things.
So, due process in this thing is like, that's, it's really critical.
What is before us is side setback only, as written.
But interestingly enough, I didn't even notice, and neither did our, anybody else, that even as the plan is drawn. So why, why did this only come for a side yard?
It was clearly a miscommunication within our office.
I have a question. Did the butters receive a copy of this plan? Or is it only the board that, 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 that she's.
No, they received the.
You're in a rut, right?
Not particularly. Oh, I'm the Jason.
Gotcha.
The, uh, my understanding is that something this size, uh, or maybe all times, they'll be told to call the planning department to see a copy of it.
Do we know if anyone called?
Eric's not here.
Even if they did, it doesn't matter. That's not the, the issue is whether.
No, we didn't get any correspondence with anyone with a complaint. Or, or, you know, either way, we didn't get correspondence from anybody other than the town.
Wish I could help you, I really do. Um, I mean, I'm willing to, I'm willing to pause here. And decide our case and then we can talk some more about it, uh, as we.
It doesn't sound like that's gonna go in my favor. I think. It makes sense for me to withdraw this application.
Okay.
And, you know.
We have to allow it, but we'd be happy to give you, uh, allow you to do it. Once you're before us, we have to say it's okay.
Gotcha, okay.
We have to vote to do that. Is that what you're asking us to do?
I'm not sure if that's the right thing for me to do.
Can we talk?
Why don't you, can we pause? Talk to people and, uh, okay, we're gonna put this hearing on hold. Actually, if, we need to vote to that. Everybody, all in favor of, of, I'm coming.
To pause it.
Yes, just to pause this.
And anybody opposed to allowing us to pause for a moment?
Nope, no. I talked to some, you're good, just sit down. Um.
We don't, he needs to go dial a friend, that's all.
Um. Can we just, should we just wait? I guess we should. See what you do. We'll give you a couple of minutes, so, so I need.
I need nothing.
Wait, why are we pausing? I thought we were pausing to actually just deliberate on the fence thing and then come back to this conversation. You're saying, you're, you're, you're giving him a pause to think for a minute about how he wants to proceed?
That's what I thought it was.
I would be asking myself.
Could we, could we talk about the fact of it if we, like, if he withdraws this application, he's gonna have to pay for another special. Permit application to correct a clerical error. Is it possible to do something, like worst-case scenario, even if you can't move forward now? Can we spare the cost of a second application somehow by?
We still have.
Application is. I, they're gonna have, so we could, we could do what we did with the tower. They could amend the application. You could amend the application, which means submitting a new set of drawings. I would say that by, by continuing it and allowing you to amend it, you wouldn't have to pay the fee to submit again.
Can I amend it to include the front yard?
Yeah, that's.
Yes, that's what we're saying. You would amend it to have the front yard setback included and we would come back to this plan.
If you're moving, if, so you wanna, if you want relief from the front yard instead of moving it. And you're gonna use this to ask for the relief, you can amend it to ask for the relief as an additional request.
Okay, thank you.
Now, is, is this drawing a twenty percent relief in front yard?
It's, it's within.
It's within the twenty percent.
Yes.
Yes, so you, yes, you can do that. So why don't we make a motion to continue it, uh. To give you a chance to amend, amend, uh, the application. You can come back. And, uh. And, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I thought you were gonna call somebody.
No, it would be me.
You'd be calling yourself? I thought you said it was a partner.
Uh, he is recovering from knee surgery and he wouldn't have anything to say.
Okay. Make a motion. Make a motion to. Continue this matter until September, until the September meeting, giving the applicant time to amend. Your application to request a twenty percent reduction in the front yard based on the submitted plans. Okay, somebody second that, please.
Okay, so.
A second. That, that makes sense?
Yes.
It's gonna look nice here with a house in that lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was not a pretty lot.
Okay, can we?
Aye.
Any opposed? Like the records show that it is unanimous? Okay, you know, there's kind of a streak when Eric doesn't show up.
So we are going to deliberate on.
Yeah, let's go.
Fifth Cross Street.
Could we do a quick five-minute break before we do deliberations? If you want to comment.
We're gonna take a five-minute break. We're gonna start back up. She's about why.
Stomach and stretching.
Considering it's such a difficult lot to develop. Goes straight up in the back.
Come on, come on, I'll.
So I don't know why they're not just considering singles going there. I, I have questions about the parking proposition and what. So I need to do a little more research about what Greenfield says about.
Yeah, no, and also.
One, one space per unit is what is the Greenfield parking.
One, okay.
Yeah.
The other thing is that there is a slope, uh, in the ordinance.
Yeah, maximum slope.
There's maximum slope, so that, that wouldn't be, I mean, usually what happens is things are brought before us.
Yeah.
But, but, but based on what the planning and the town departments see from submitted plans, I mean, we don't independently. You know, view this and then decide what things in the zoning ordinance. I mean, sometimes we do, but generally speaking, the issue you're talking about, you might want to research it and talk to Eric about it.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so this plan is probably on record at the town? Yes.
Yes. A little bit, it's, I'm not, my plan, to engage everybody, but I'm, I'm thinking of different things. Glad that everybody's kind of.
Yeah, well, hey, yes. Six and seven or whatever.
To me, the due process is the big deal. People have the right to. And that, it troubles me that Sarah wasn't given notice, but I think that the, than the applicants. But I think that's part of the, that's an assessor issue. We're always, the statute is about who's listed in the assessor's. I think it does. Let's see what it says. He derived location code?
He is.
There you go.
You miss him?
Yes, I do.
Not that you don't.
For the record.
No, I know, I know, I, I, I know I'm sitting in a.
He has a padded seat and I switched it. I needed a pad and we're naked. David Stone Farm is extended until September? Yeah, okay. That'll be an early meeting at night.
Early.
Wait, like starting early or just moving slow, moving quickly?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Bring a snack.
I've given a chairman a hard time.
Bring a snack and a pillow.
Not a bad idea.
I don't think it'll be considered.
I drove up by there the other day. Interesting. Haven't been up here in years.
You down to Stone Farm?
Yeah, behind the old way out.
You know, I actually drove out to go see it and once I started hitting the dirt road, I was like, I don't even know where I'm going or if I'm gonna be able to turn around. That whole COVID walkabout, so I was down there all the time, walking around those trails on the bottom of the river.
Isn't there a hiking trail that goes all the way up the Fort G Tower?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it, and it goes, you, you can continue on up and get to the top of Terrence Falls Road, wherever that road is, that. Those are some shopping, shopping turns, then you can walk back into the whole Nolan Beck sort of area back in there.
I remember there'd be people up there walking ten and twelve dogs on leash. I said, did they actually stop and pick up after those dogs?
No.
Yeah.
I remember as a kid hanging around up there after middle school, that was a real pretty area.
Yeah. Well, gravel pits all around there.
Oh, God, yes.
Yes. And that weird old student baker in the, in the gout, was that there when you were a kid? That's been there since like the.
No, I don't remember that.
Look at that, seven, twelve.
I used to pull out somebody up there at six o'clock on Sunday morning, they get struck by a hand in there. Didn't get stuck by a hand. Bring up your Jeep, bring up the post trap. See if, here it ends in a small matter. I like Ushuri.
Thank you. It's a great town.
Nice place to visit. Remember the nice place to visit sign on ninety-one?
That's right. Yeah, yeah. I used to live up to that way. Yeah, it was down at the end of Lug Plain West.
It's, yeah, for now, yeah.
Yep.
All right, let's take that.
And so the notice has to be given according to the tax list. So that's, so she was in compliance. But, all right, let's, uh.
Are you done?
Let's open, yeah. Um. So, so would someone make a motion to approve, uh. Sarah's application and then we'll talk about it.
I'll make a motion, yeah. Application of territory for property located at six Cross Beach, assessors map one oh four, lot thirty-one, which is located. which is located in the urban residential RA zoning district, for a special permit pursuant to sections two hundred dash six dot two E and two hundred dash eight dot three for the zoning ordinance in order to allow six foot fence with a portion of the front yard setback area at this location.
Subjected to the following conditions.
Subjected to the following.
Are you a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Maybe, you know, I have something to say, but I don't want to wait to hear what others have to say.
Do you have any correspondence?
Just kind of like, oh, uh, no, I don't believe.
Yeah, we do, for, um, for, no, not for this one, I already read them. Nobody had any comments.
David, for me, I feel like it would be helpful to just kind of go back to like, what is it we're actually here to vote on? Because it feels to me like some of the contention around whether the current fence line is legally placed or not feels like a wrinkle, and I'm not sure that it should. It feels like it's not really our jurisdiction. Like, to me, I guess I feel like the only thing that I'm here to deliberate on is four feet versus six feet.
Yeah.
And I'd love to make sure that we're all on the same page, that that's what we're.
Yeah.
On some level, if the fence line is in dispute, I feel like that's just for another town department to
I, I.
figure out.
Yeah, I agree.
And so for me, it just kind of feels like what we're talking about here is six feet versus four feet. And I guess since I'm already talking, I would just go a little further, if I recognize that the neighbor is kind of feeling like that they just don't want a fence, period, in terms of driving visibility, but I think there's, again, this reality of the four foot fence would be allowed by right. Um, and so that, that visibility blockage is going to happen when you're in a vehicle pulling in or out. It's not going all the way to the street anyways. So despite, you know, I appreciate that there's some difficulties or contention, and my sympathy to all parties involved, but that's the case. But I would be inclined to support this application as it's submitted, and to support this.
And it's all revealed until four seconds.
Yeah, so, I mean, I know there was some stuff we said, but to me, I, I would be inclined to support it.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, I, I would agree with Mark. I went out there, I didn't feel that it detracted from visibility. Um, it was very similar to other fences that were right across the street, right next door. Um, you know, and really, we're talking about three panels being at six feet when she could have four feet by right. So I, I felt it, it was actually, I actually thought it looked really nice, and it would be very fitting for the neighbor.
Yeah, it's not detrimental, right? That's, the standard is, it's, it's not detrimental.
Yeah.
Much, yeah, jeopardized vehicle and pedestrian traffic.
Correct, yeah.
Anybody else?
Should, should we set as a condition that the first section be a four foot high fence, not six?
Well, that's what the.
It has to be, oh, I thought it said six.
No, that we're granting three six foot panels that are special permitted by us. The four foot panel at the end is actually allowed by right.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, Mark, you, I think you hit the nail on the head. And you should understand this as well, and Sarah, you should understand this as well. So we're being asked whether or not we think that six foot high panels where they're, where she's asking them to be located uh, should be allowed under our special permitting under that particular section of our code. And I think that it should be, based on the sighting and, and everything else that normally we, that we normally take into consideration when we allow this, the height to go from four to six feet. If anybody ever puts a fence on, on their, on their property incorrectly, that's a dispute, that's a legal dispute between the neighbors. Um, so I think we're outside of that dispute.
Yes.
Not unless, I mean, I, I mean, I guess the exception would be if somebody came running in here with a survey and showed us something that, that said that this was a problem, I don't know what we would do then, but that's not what's before us. There is no survey. And by the admission of the neighbor, the distance is a couple of inches. So I'm feeling like that's a, that's a, you're, you're, you're putting your fence in at your own risk. So I, you know, and Sarah, neighbor, if you feel there's a problem, then you have other legal remedies.
I mean, if, 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 let's just say it's not on the correct property line. If she moved it over six inches, she's still allowed to have it anyway.
Right.
Now, I realize that that's a bone of contention, but I firmly believe it's not within our, I would approve it. She, yeah, if this is confirmed on her property line, I would approve it.
I can confirm that getting a survey is like thirty-five hundred dollar expense, because we had a potential dispute with, with our neighbor, and they said, well, just go out and get a survey done, and we'll find out. And it was so expensive that we said, screw it. We were arguing about who would be responsible for taking down a tree that was close to the property line. We contend that it was all, all on their property. So to take down the tree was eight hundred dollars, which we split with them, I'm sorry, seven hundred, we split with them, and to get it surveyed would have been thirty-five hundred dollars, and it's like no brainer. Yeah, really.
Well, so we could incorporate into the special permit that, in the event that a dispute reveals that the fence has to be moved a relatively short distance in order to deal with that boundary line dispute, that special permit still stands.
It, am I correct that, that the, the fence is placed six inches back from the supposed property line?
That's not in our bylaw. That's, that's probably what people do, but.
Is that what you did?
No, sure, I think it's right. Yours fence is right on the line, correct?
Right on.
It's not on the line, it's up to the line.
Right.
Yeah, if not, maybe an inch or two on my side.
That's what you say, the other, Sarah would say you're on her property, but, or should we just leave it alone?
Leave it alone. We should leave it alone. Like, on some level, I feel like the, the condition, like this, the, the issue before us in terms of the special permit, it doesn't matter if it's here or here. We're talking about if it's here.
She can have a fence on her property that's.
The fence needs to move, there's already a special permit in place saying it can be six feet high. We're done. You know, that's our duty.
Okay, so then there's no, the condition would be that it conforms with the application?
Yep.
All right, anymore, you have anything you want to say about that? Is that what we're talking about? So hearing nothing, all in favor, say aye. By.
Aye.
Jim, Deb.
Aye.
Aye.
Eric, David, let the record show it's unanimous that the special permit is allowed as presented. Okay.
A hundred twenty, if you want to sign a hundred twenty day period, so she's aware. So I'd like to thank everybody for your time, also for your presentation.
If, so, uh, person, a person who has standing to do can appeal this decision in twenty days from our submission to the clerk's office.
Correct. Good night, everyone. Well, we still have to prove the minutes. And, and there's anything that David had?
So, so the, so, and I, I want you to know that the tower decision was presented to me somewhat similarly to the minutes, and I, I redrafted it based on what I thought, you know, what's going on at the, the deeper pieces of what we were talking about. So I guess the question is, do we want these minutes to be the minutes as they relate to the decision? Because, for example, you know, the applicant felt paid attorney's fees and costs after, you know, that, that I, that was discussed, it's not in the minutes. So I can move the motion to amend that, that's one thing that I looked at, but I did not really compare this to the decision to see. Now, people don't think it's that important. The decision's a decision, we signed off on that. But if somebody were to read the decision and read the minutes, this is a lighter version. So does, does that matter to anybody?
Well, I guess, I guess the only reason why we might, we might want to have more detailed minutes is to help support anybody if there's any legal ramifications, or if anyone that's going to come in and, and do that, would it help the, the city attorney to have our thought process listed out in regards to why we did what decisions we made? Would that benefit him, or can we just go back and look at the reporting?
Well, this, this is a legal document, if it, if it's appeal. Minutes.
And they started construction, what does it cost us to just hold off on approving them and?
They have to be amended, so.
Yeah, but, well, I would, then, I would, I would say, let's amend them, so they're, they're, they're the best.
I'd actually like to tie the decision into the minutes myself.
Okay, I would agree with that.
That's kind of the same thing.
So we'll hold off on approving until we've had a chance to, to draft them more fully.
So why would I make a motion to, do we think we need to make a motion or just, just let it go? But let's, we, it's part of our agenda, so let's make a motion to, to, to continue, to continue making the decision on the minutes until the next meeting. So move, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Do you have a move to adjourn, or do you have?
I don't, I mean, I don't, this.
Okay.
Or.
I would like to make a move to, in terms of the meeting.
I'll second that, yeah.
Oh, one more. No, go ahead.
It's out, yeah.
Okay, who said motion made?
I, I motion, I did.
Second.
One of us seconded.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Let the record show it's unanimous.
All right, thank you.